It's 5:30 PM on June 21st, 2023, and I'd like to call the work session for the City of Madison to order. We're gonna begin by changing up the agenda order, and we're going to start with Dublin Park. And Mr. Patel, I think you're here to speak to that, so would you like to come to the podium?
My charts survived the last couple of weeks. Do you know if they did by any chance?
Oh, um...
If not, I can just speak to it.
Was the email to John or Chris, or who had it?
It was emailed, oh, gosh, it was last month. About two weeks, three weeks, yeah, it was. That's a guy I can speak to. It's fairly straightforward. I'm gonna have a conversation with Corey Alfred from the Department of Parks and Rec. There's a 1.1 mile walking trail at Dublin Park, and the idea is to build fitness stations along that 1.1 mile trail. Between eight to 10 stations, and the station would be comprised of a concrete pad and a very basic type of stretching station or pull-up station that you might have seen in other parks throughout this area. The idea for construction is very straightforward. It's pressure-treated wood and metal bars as needed and bolts. So it's not the high-end, very expensive, you know, fully zero-maintenance, but these will last 25 years. The way they're positioned, and they're not taking the same wear and tear as, say, like a deckwood. The handshake of labor would be distributed. Corey's offered to help with concrete work and potentially talk to, I forgot which department he mentioned in the city, but to help deal with excavating to where the pads would go. The other half of it would be for the volunteer, community volunteers, to do the prefab the wood, get it all cut aside, get it all drilled, and then do the installs. And we're working with Corey on what time of year that park has the least activity, so that we're not interrupting soccer mainly out there. The rough estimate for the cost, which I'm offering to do some fundraising from the community, is under $5,000 for supplies. The main effort will come from the concrete work, which Corey's gonna, Corey offered to work. So I think the stage is now that Corey's presented to the Parks and Rec Board, who have approved or liked the project, and now we're here talking to the city to see if that's agreeable on your end to proceed. The labor on part of it would be from the city for the concrete and potentially the excavation, and then the rest of it would be sort of volunteer-driven. So that's pretty much it. We can circulate the charts around if you want after the fact.
Yeah, so Mr. Patel came with this, and first of all, thank you for being flexible with us as we work through this. And I know we had a, you know, communication snafu at the beginning, but, yeah, just, he wanted to make sure that we're all okay with this going forward. He's really not asking for anything from us other than excavation help and pouring the pads, and then he would, you know, work fundraising for the other elements.
And all the actual locations and the approval of what the stations will be will be coordinated with Corey?
Yeah, he has gone before the Recreation Advisory Board multiple times, and they offered some input, and then last time brought it through, and they've agreed with it and how it looks. And I was thinking, so I think it's something that's good. It'll add some value, and, you know, I think it's something we should go forward with.
We're just really providing some labor. We're not really providing any materials, other than concrete.
Concrete, yeah, concrete, right, and the property, right. And from what I understand from Corey, it's of the greenway that we have right now, it's the only one that can have a fitness trail because of the flood areas along the flat greenways on the creek. So, yeah, so I think Corey's been willing to have one in the park, and this is the only option on the table for location.
Corey, you have enough money in your budget to cover the cost of the excavation and the concrete? Okay. Corey, can you wait till you get to the max?
The Rec Board looked at the project as well, and their only caveat was maintenance. You guess, have a maintenance plan for long-term, you know, sealing and that kind of thing. And then with the understanding that the equipment does in disrepair, that we can tear it out and put in benches or something else.
So I guess some of it comes out of Public Works and some of it comes out of your budget?
It'll come from my budget. The only thing I need from Public Works is maybe to borrow some equipment, but I got two masons on our staff that can pour those pads once we level the ground or whatever.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next we have mural guidelines.
Are you gonna make this one as easy?
Easy.
Worth asking.
It all depends on you. So... So you recall at your work session on May 8th, we introduced the concept of some mural guidelines. This is in response to some inquiries from some members of the community. We presented a draft to you. After that meeting, we circulated the draft to MVP, who has an interest in promoting murals in the city, also distributed the draft to the Historic Preservation Commission members. Currently, we allow murals in our downtown historic district, and they have a separate set of regulations to try and get input. And then, of course, we sent you all the draft as well electronically, and then staff took a look at it. And so, and we also met with Brian, City Attorney, to make sure we're kind of covering our bases legally and just kind of reviewed our research. So based upon that, we've tweaked some of the language in here. And so the draft that you have before you is now dated as today's date instead of the May 8th date. But all of the changes compared with that May 8th draft that you may have reviewed and marked up are shown in red, so it's pretty easy for you to follow along. What I'd like to do is just spend a few minutes going over some key provisions, and then happy to entertain questions. Okay, so I'm gonna work off of, starting on the fourth page. And as I go through this, I'll talk a little bit about some of the input that we've received as well. And really, whenever we're looking at any kind of code provision or potential code provision, the first thing we want to do is start with a definition. And so we've crafted this definition of what a mural is. We did field the question about how is this different from a sign? And are we making sure that we're acknowledging the potential differences there? So in our sign ordinance, we talk about any kind of graphic or image, which its primary purpose is to draw attention to a business, an organization, and activity. Here in our definition of a mural, we specifically say that it does not direct attention to an organization, a business, or an activity. So if somebody were to come forward and present some type of a graphic, you know, to our planning counter, for example, our first question is going to be, does this qualify as a sign or a mural in the event that you guys proceed with mural regulations? So that'll be our first question. If we determine that it's a sign, then we're gonna go through the zoning ordinance sign regulations. If we determine that it classifies as a mural, then we would use whatever you decide to adopt as a mural. But that's gonna be the first item. We looked through a number of different cities' regulations in crafting all of these guidelines, including that definition. The second item is very important, and that's where are we recommending we allow murals? You can see there, we've added public property, because it was our intent to allow that. We just hadn't, weren't thinking about it. So we thought we should specify that. So to allow a mural on a public property, for example, it could be a city park, or to allow it in any of our commercial districts, B1, B2, B3, the commercial area of our TND, which is our traditional neighborhood development. So if you think of the village at Oakland Springs, where they've got that commercial cluster right at the front, Urban Center District, which is Town Madison, and then Mix-Use District, and we really have very limited Mix-Use District, but that would be similar to Urban Center or TND. You could certainly consider allowing murals in other locations if you would like, but this is what our recommendation is. And the other key provision related to location of murals is that they need to be visible from a street, pedestrian path, or publicly accessible space. It sort of goes without saying that somebody's probably not gonna go to the expense to put a mural where no one could see it, but, you know, sometimes it's important to state kind of the obvious. We are recommending that a mural advisory board be created for the approval process, and we did field a question regarding that. In the absence of a mural advisory board, you would need to determine how you want the murals to be approved. For example, if somebody's proposing a mural on city property, do you want the mural to come to City Council for review and approval? Would you want Corey as the park's head to approve that? We didn't think that either of those was really optimal, and so we thought it would be helpful to have a mural advisory board. The intent of the mural advisory board would be to make sure, and we'll go over these items, that they've got their maintenance plan, that they're thinking about the right type of paint, that the people who are going to install the mural have the capability of installing the mural, that the property owner and the artist have worked out their agreement. What the mural advisory board would not be doing is regulating the content of the mural, because under First Amendment regulations, we can't do that. We can regulate obscenity, and so certainly if someone were crazy enough to propose that, you know, that would be in the purview of the mural advisory board to say, no. But the mural advisory board can't, you know, say, well, we really don't like it to have flowers, or we really don't like it to have X, because that's content, and we're precluded from that. If it's a mural that's proposed on city property, we have more rights as the city to look at content. And, you know, we would work, or whichever department would work with the City Attorney's Office to make sure you're apprised of whatever is being proposed. But if it's proposed on private property, we're really limited as a government in terms of what we can regulate. We think the mural advisory board is a good idea, but that's certainly up to you. You may have a different idea of how you want that approval process to go. Because we currently allow murals in our historic district, and we do not want to upend that, if somebody's proposing a mural in the historic district, we'd want it to go to the mural advisory board first to make sure that they've got their maintenance plan and all of those things, and then go to the Historic Commission for what we call a certificate of appropriateness. Now, in the historic district, the district has a regulation that says any mural has to be related to the history of Madison, but it doesn't get more specific than that, and they really feel very strongly about that. And so we'd like to continue to honor that if we can.
Mayor Beth, may I ask you a question?
Sure. Oh, yeah, ask at any time.
I know that you've said that there would be no obscenity, but would there be references to something that was illegal, say, marijuana leaf or something? Is that something that we could regulate?
I don't...
Can you say that no illegal activity could be represented or something?
Well, I would always refer to the attorney my, based upon everything we saw on private property, I don't think we could regulate a picture of a marijuana leaf.
Uh, that, there's not a lot of bright lines when it comes to some of this, but I think that whenever it's gonna be our property, it's gonna be government speech, that we basically can, will have a lot of leeway as far as what we decide is gonna be there or not. But once you do get into that private property, then it becomes harder and harder to, for us to articulate the reason why we want to regulate that content. A marijuana leaf may actually fall within something that we could regulate, but it's, I will say that, you know, 80, 90% of what might come across on private property is gonna be very hard for us to regulate. I can't tell you with any certainty right here without researching and seeing what some courts have done in that kind of instance. But I think that if there's, if there's anything promoting illegal activity, I think we actually do have some leeway to regulate some of that.
Okay. Well, that's new information. So currently, all of the law that we've seen is related to obscenity, but we're welcome to that. On the fifth page, we talk about the fact that there would be an application fee, kind of the mechanics of what the application would be. And in item 6B, this is where we talk about the maintenance plan, the fact that whoever's presenting the mural has to have a plan to show how the mural would be maintained, how it could be removed, who would be responsible for all of those items, provide a copy of their contract agreement, and then how it would be removed if it were damaged, either due to weather or storm or a car crashing into it or something. And the next few, the next items that go from page five over to six and seven, we get into some more specifics about the mural, and this is just sort of best practices for murals and how you take care of them, or the things that you need to be thinking through. Item 17, we did quite a few changes. Well, actually, I should go back. On item seven, one of the questions we filled it was, what if a mural was damaged by a storm or a tornado? What happens? And so we've added some language there that, we already had built in that the murals would need to be inspected twice a year to see how they're surviving the weather. So we've added in language that if there was a storm or an accident, it should be inspected. And then if it's deemed too damaged to be repaired, what needs to happen? And then in item 17, we added some more specificity about that removal and also getting into the relationship between the property owner and the artist. There was an act passed in 1990 that gives a lot of rights to the artists that create public art. And there are a number of cases in which property owners removed art and then ended up having to pay a lot of money as a consequence. So what we envision, if you go forward with this, is coming up with, perhaps it's gonna be a checklist for those property owners that are considering allowing a mural on their property, maybe an FAQ page. We probably will come up with, I'll say, some recommended contract items that they need to be thinking about to sort of make sure that they're aware that once they allow art on their private property, that artist has a lot of rights. And that they need to build into whatever contract that they have with that artist to cover, you know, what happens if they sell the business? What happens if they get tired of the art, you know, all those types of things? We've built into the mural permit an approval for a three-to-five-year period, thinking that if somebody's gonna go to the expense of putting in a mural, it'll probably be there for a while. And once that permit is over, let's say they have a five-year permit, that mural needs to be removed. Well, they need to make sure that they've got an agreement with that artist of how it can be removed. They also need to be thinking about copyright and those types of things. And so, you know, we live in a buyer beware state, and this is sort of a property owner beware of what you're agreeing to, because the artists have rights appropriately, so. So we made some changes in 17 related to that. We are not gonna be able to specify what the private property owner and the artist agree to, but we want to make sure they're going in with eyes wide open about what they're agreeing to. And again, if we're talking about a mural on the city property, we're gonna have a contract with the artist, and we'll work through all of those things with the Attorney's Office. And I think that is the high level. We didn't get any comments that I think people, nobody identified, I'll say, a wholesale issue with what we're doing or proposing. And we think we've addressed pretty much all of the comments. We'll probably still, you know, we're wordsmith people, and so we'll probably massage this a little bit more. What we talked about with Brian is that it does make sense to codify this, and so we have to find a resting place for it. If you decide you want to go forward, does it go into our zoning ordinance? Or does it go into the municipal ordinance? We haven't really settled on that location yet. If it goes into the zoning ordinance, it'll go to the Planning Commission first before it comes to you. If it just goes into the municipal ordinance, it'll just come directly to you for first and second reading, and we could certainly have another work session if you would like. Any other questions?
I just have one. Can the Madison Arts Alliance be involved in this process?
Sure. Did not circulate it to them, just because they've sort of reconstituted. But do you mean involved in terms of looking at the draft guidelines?
And that would be great, and then to be considered for the committee, should you go that route?
Yeah, so the recommended committee membership is identified on page four in item 4A. And the council may want to change that membership that's completely your druthers. So, and I would just need a contact for the Arts Alliance to know who to send this to as well.
Can I follow up on that one, because I had a few questions just on the composition of the board or advisory board? A couple of things. Who are you envisioning as the employee of the city, or why do we need an employee of the city?
We hadn't really settled on anybody. It might be somebody from the Parks Department just thinking about the fact that art, some of these murals might be proposed on public property. So I haven't talked with Corey about it, but that was kind of in my mind as kind of a logical person. It's nice to have a city person that's kind of aware of, I'll say, construction liability issues, all of those kinds of things. So that would probably be my first choice, but it could also maybe be somebody from, you know, Public Works or something like that.
It also helps to have almost as a liaison to the city, so as the group itself needs information, they have someone within the city who can lead, you know, obtaining that information and get it back.
Okay, and then...
Can I just ask on that question, on that note, would you consider a liaison from council to be, or if you wanted?
From the Arts Alliance.
Right.
And would, because one of the things, I mean, one of the things that hit me about the five members, if you had, I'm thinking back to like when we first appointed a school board. We had five members, but we had the five members staggered, and they do lots in terms of, so you had some continuity. I mean, I didn't know if you were envisioning, because you're on for a four-year term, if you were envisioning staggering?
Yeah, just to have... We certainly can. We hadn't really gotten to that minutia, I guess I'll say, but that implementation certainly could do that. And again, this can, it doesn't have to only be five people. You could grow it. You can shrink it. It can be whoever you'd like.
Okay, and then the other question I had about it was, when it says mayor and council will nominate, usually when we have boards, it's either the mayor has a certain number, the council has a certain number, and it's clear who's appointing which spot, so...
Five, and he gets nine.
Or we can grow it. I mean, you know, it could be...
Right.
I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to seven, I mean, or whatever.
Okay. Again, we're, there are certain things in this that we don't feel strongly about. That's one of them.
Okay, so I was just thinking we needed to kind of outline that just a little bit more.
I think that's a good point, and I think we saw with the Police Advisory Committee, for example, for my guy, he said four years, that sounds great, and after two, he, you know...
Yeah.
It's a big commitment for him.
So when this goes forward, assuming it does, the mural advisory board, we would amend the municipal code to create the municipal advisory board, just like in there, there's the Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission. So when we do that amendment for the municipal code for this board, we would identify in there staggered terms as well as membership, so we can certainly do that. I will just need some way to collectively understand what your preferences in terms of composition. And so if you want to follow up with emails to me, and then I can, we can kind of see if it all coalesces nicely. Or not. Okay. So right now, I'm hearing a member of the Alliance, Art, whatever, yeah, I wrote it down. Thank you, yeah. All right. And staggered terms, I'm hearing, is of interest. Okay.
I got a simple question. I'm assuming the benefit that we're reaping here is to beautify our city. That's kind of what we're trying to do, correct?
Well, I think you would get different responses. I think some murals are intended to be beautiful, but some are just intended to grab attention. They're not all beautiful, but I think the intent from people who are interested is they see it as an economic development tool, because people like to go and do a selfie in front of a mural. And so if you have a mural, it might, let's say, let's say we had one in a location, people might be attracted to go there and take a picture, and it might draw attention to the, positive attention to the area and get people, customers, to the businesses. So that's the higher purpose.
Yeah, it's like marketing. I mean, you go to Nashville, right? There are certain areas you can go to, take a mural, and go to Downtown Hustle and wherever the fish is or whatever.
It's also another version of public art.
Right.
It's a noble cause in and of itself.
And the state of Alabama has an Alabama Public Arts Trail. I'm forgetting the exact name. But they're actually working on a statewide, you know, public art mural trail, if you will, in the state. So they do see it as a tourism component.
I think anybody that knows me knows there's not an artistic bone in my body anywhere, I mean, including mine.
Well, you're not gonna be on the committee. Don't worry about it.
That, it's not. I can't even see blacks and blues, so you really don't want me on there. So, but my, I guess what I'm concerned by is, if there's no control over content, you know, I mean, we're such a divided nation at this point. I mean, that means half of our citizens are gonna be happy, and the other half's gonna be unhappy. Why are we even opening this Pandora's box? That's my only...
That's my concern. With everything going on right now, you can't do that. And, you know, well, the beauty is in the eye of the beholder or whatever, and some people might think it looks amazing, and the other half of the town may go, that looks like crap. Don't agree with that. And then all of a sudden, we end up on the Today Show.
Well, it's just, no, it goes back to the economic development, right? I mean, there's a, there's a piece there that absolutely that could work. There's also a piece there that, you know, yesterday it meant something, today it means something different, and you've got it there for five years. So that's what I'm, how do you, it's an ever-changing world. How do we regulate? You know, if something's on there for five years, and, you know, what do we do?
So I share your concern. I do not think that this is an easy-peasy kind of thing. And, but, you know, some thoughts on that. Instead of having it be allowed for a three-to-five-year period, you could reduce it down. You know, it is, depending upon the size of the mural, it can be fairly expensive to pull, install, but maybe you decide you only want to allow them for up to three-year periods. You could also see what kind of applications come in, you know, over the first year, and if you don't, you know, and if we're not regulating content on private property, then, and you're not happy with what you're seeing, disallow them. If it's there, they could be allowed to stay. You can always change a regulation. The other option, if you want full content control, is to only allow them on public property and not allow them on private property. So you've got some options there.
The ones that I've heard you speak of are one business here, and then the others would be one business outside the historic area near Kroger is the one I've heard of.
Okay. I'm not familiar with that one.
With CJ's Coffee, one of them?
I'm not familiar with that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Apparently. So there's certainly interest in doing something downtown. And I hadn't, that's the first time I think I've heard of that one, and so...
And I don't know that for certain. I just, but then the other, the only other one I heard was downtown. So the ones that I know of are on private businesses. So what would be an example of something on a public business? Would that be like if a school decided to?
Well, that is public property, but I was thinking of like Dublin Park or Palmer Park. You know, if somebody wanted to do a mural on the side of one of the buildings on both parks, right? They could apply to do a mural. The city would be able to regulate the content. You know, we've got the new community center. I mean, there's opportunities, right, on different pieces of public property. We do require that the mural has to be attached to a building or an accessory building associated with a building. In other words, they couldn't just build like a, put up a billboard effectively. Yeah, that wouldn't be allowed. But, yeah, I mean, there are some ways that you could try and head it off. Um, but yeah, I mean, there are some ways that you could try and head it off, um...
One thing we don't need the loose side of is if somebody has a business and they want to put a mural on it, they, it would not be in the best interest of that business to alienate half of the population. There would be some scrutiny by the business owner. Now, am I going to say that everybody is going to love every mural? No, but not everybody loves every piece of art in the loop either. So, artist's objective, it is in the eye of the beholder, but it is also something that broadens minds, and it is a benefit to the public. So, let's not throw out the baby with, with the bathwater here. Maybe we need to think about this some more, and massage this some more, talk with the Arts Alliance, get some more input from our community, see, you know, give our citizens a chance to weigh in some more. I mean, I know we talked about it in May, and now we're here, but we're not in a rush to get this finished.
No, I, I, no, I mean, from our perspective, no. I know the MVP and Melanie or Mecca are here, um, they're working on trying to, um, they're planning on applying for some funding to, um, help put a grant, uh, together, or to get a grant, um, to put a mural, uh, potentially downtown. And, but they're looking at, I think grants are awarded in the fall, and so maybe like a fall installation, but there's nothing immediate. And, and that's the only group that has approached the city wanting to do a mural.
Let me ask them, what's the, do you know a deadline here for when you might have to apply for that grant?
Yeah, it's not awarded until the fall.
It wouldn't be awarded till October, but you would have, well...
They're applying now.
You're applying now, okay.
Oh, okay.
Implement it.
Okay, okay, so, so there is, we have a little bit of wiggle right here.
Yeah, we have time, and we're not, again, we're, um, you know, the, the council can choose not to do this, or it can choose to amend it. I mean, that's perfectly fine.
Could we reach out to Huntsville and see what they've had in terms of response? Have they had any issues? Because I know several of us went to the nineteen, twenty-first, nineteenth Amendment and had our pictures taken when we got in office. So, they've had their murals at least a couple of years.
Yeah, they have, um, we can certainly talk with them. They do not have any adopted guidelines. Um, they don't have anything codified, so, um, but we can certainly, we can talk with them, sure.
No, if they've gotten anything that they've had to say, no, you can't do that.
Mm-hmm, or how they've done that.
You have to be very careful saying, if you, if it's selling on content, that's First Amendment. But then you have to be very careful, if it's on city property, is a private business that comes to us and says, "We're applying for this mural, we have very little say-so, except for obscenity and apparently, um, illegal..."
Drugs, maybe, stuff, yeah.
Then, you, you have to be very, very careful. There are several lawsuits pending in the US, and have been settled in the US, that have cost cities, um, businesses lots and lots of money. So, we don't want to get into a situation where we're setting this up, ourselves up for a lawsuit. That would not be wise.
And, you know, and we talked, you know, as staff about, um, do you adopt guidelines, or do you just sort of allow the murals? But, you know, because the downside of adopting the guidelines is, is then you have enforceable action, right? Um, there's pros and cons to, to that. Um, but it, it just, it's, you know, if the city were to somehow allow and facilitate a mural on a property without any kind of guidelines, it, we think that opens, um, you know, a gate to something that we, we don't want to go down, so...
If I could point out, maybe the guidelines may serve more as a speed bump, uh, for some of that content, that maybe we're, you know, concerned about coming, because the murals may come without any guidelines. At least this, this what we've proposed could potentially, at least give...
Right now, you're telling me we can do, anybody can do it?
No, we don't allow them. If somebody, people have asked us about doing murals, and I, and I've said they're not allowed, except for in the Historic District, um, where the, the Historic Commission has adopted a regulation. Um, again, they're allowed, they have to be related to the history of Madison.
Oh, I couldn't go paint on the side of my house, a mural?
You're allowed to paint your private property. We do not have architectural, um, guidelines for single-family homes.
John, your AHO, AHOA won't allow it.
Um, most of the...
It's not in my covenants.
Yeah.
I know those very well, it is not in my...
Well, thank you for planting that idea in people's heads, Mr. Seifer, but, um, but, uh, we don't regulate how people paint their houses. So, theoretically, somebody could do something like that on their, their private home.
Well, private business can do the same.
There, we do have regulations about architectural, um, appearance of buildings, and so I think that we would have a more say over it. And if it was, again, is it considered to be a sign or a mural? Most businesses are going to put the name of their business on there, and they're going to do things to advertise a product, in which case it becomes a sign.
Well, how about, and I, I'm just...
That's fine.
It's a work session, let's have a discussion about it.
That's good.
Uh, Bob Jones, James Clemmons, like, when Chick-fil-A was in the city of Madison, they did murals all over their windows.
Hmm, so we, um, we do allow, um, up to twenty-five percent of a window of a business to have advertising. Um, you know, sometimes they'll do like a seasonal thing, right, where they'll do snow and snowflakes and whatnot, and you can do twenty-five percent of your window. We wrote twenty-five percent into these mural guidelines as, as a result. The intent here is that mural will be more permanent, right, wouldn't be seasonal. Um, so we do allow something like that.
Yeah, I guess where my mind is at is, uh, I don't, I mean, we can't regulate content regardless. So, with it being guidelines, it's, it, it, there's really no teeth in it.
Well, again, what, um, the attorney is recommending, we call them guidelines, just to kind of get the conversation started, but this would become codified. It would no longer be a guideline, it would be a regulation or a standard, based upon what Brian's advising. And we've looked at different cities, um, a number of examples where they've, you know, they have codified it, right? Where they've put it in their zoning ordinance, or they've put it in their municipal code. So, it's a, I'll say, a common way to do it, because otherwise, it is just advisory, right, and not a regulation.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, my, I mean, so, there's a, there's a town, it's Morris, Illinois, and it's, it's a small town. I mean, it's, it's smaller than our downtown. There's six buildings, old historic buildings. Graduating class is probably, I don't know, fifteen people, and every year, they paint on the building. Each child gets a spot, and they get to paint on there, and it stays there for a year. And that, that is an absolutely cool idea, I love it. Um, I saw the example here, you know, Athens, and it paints, you know, a historical thing of what the city's about, and I love those things. But I can tell you from my standpoint, you know, just, just being, sitting here, and people coming up to the podium, and it being so divided, there could have been a mural painted about, you know, vaccinations, and right on the other side, one painted about, you know, not being vaccinated. Personally, I'm not ready to deal with that. I, I just, I don't want to deal with that. It's, and a staff, if that's something that staff wants to deal with, I'm okay with it, I just need to know that, because me, that's taking on a heavy burden of a very divided nation.
Well, staff isn't wanting to deal with this, but staff has asked to come up with these regulations. That's why staff is recommending a mural advisory board.
Well, and that, and that's fine, but I...
Because I agree with your comment.
I, I still think it's going to roll back, you know, I, I, I mean, ultimately, I know we've got an advisory committee, I understand that, but they're, they're not paid, they're, you know, they're going to show up to a committee meeting. Um, how loyal to, or are they, you know, when, when the crap hits the fan, and you sit in these chairs and you have to be quiet, you know, and just listen, that's all you can do. And I've seen it happen to us time and time again. We can sit here and we can take that, and that's fine, but what I don't like is when that rolls and, and, and you guys have to take care of it. I just think it, it's, you know, you're stuck in a bad spot. That's my only thing. I mean, I, I, you know, I just, uh...
Well, I think that, you know, we...
My concern.
Yeah, we share the concern, but, you know, we are, I guess, we take comfort in the fact that this is Madison, and, and I'll say, a very family-oriented community, and we would hope that, you know, saner minds would prevail. We would hope that the business owners aren't going to allow something on the side of their building that would alienate half their customers, or even a quarter of their customers. Um, you don't know for sure. Um, and so, our goal, you know, again, I have those concerns. I've seen lots of nice murals, and I've seen lots of not-nice murals. I wouldn't want to have to look at certain murals every day. But, um, we've tried to, within the confines of the law, what we can, you know, come up with something that would become statutory, that will protect all parties concerned to the extent that we can. We may have missed something, and so, you know, we're happy to get input on it, or if you want to grow the board, or change the board, or not do them, or whatever, we're, we're fine. Um, but, um, it, it, these types of things, um, sometimes get massaged, right? You may decide to go forward, and based upon your experience, pull it back, or try to narrow it down, or sometimes there can be case law that will come along, and will either expand your abilities or narrow your abilities. Um, so, we just have to be responsive to that.
I kind of like the idea of controlling what's on public property, and then on private property. You know, freedom of speech goes both ways, so, you know, you can be free to say what you want to say, but other people are free to say what they want to say, whether it's, you know, power of the purse, or power of word, and, you know, and be responsible for your actions. Well, and I don't know that we have to regulate that.
Well, we would like to, you know, we, we sometimes have to protect people from themselves, and, and so, some of our regulations are designed to do that. And, you know, we want to make sure that property owners know what they're getting into, right?
It's probably getting way too deep, but what are you really protecting them from? You're not protecting anything from content, you're saying?
No, not content, but potentially lawsuits and, 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 yeah, and just them understanding, you know, if they have a mural on their building, what they can or can't do under certain laws, or what they need to make sure that they're, you know, that they're in agreement with the artist about. And, um, you know, we're not going to be a party to that contract, but, you know, part of our job is, is to look out for people, and, and we want to try and do that. Because we want the businesses to look nice, right? We want the city to look nice, and we want them to be thoughtful about what they're doing.
What if somebody wants to paint a mural on our street?
On the what? The streets? The streets are public property, and there is specific, uh, there was specific litigation on that, and so, the city can govern what gets painted on a street.
What ordinance prohibits murals right now?
We, because we do not allow them, we don't have them identified in the code. Um, in our zoning ordinance, we say it's a permissive code. If it's not expressly allowed, then it's prohibited. And because they are not expressly allowed, they are prohibited.
Oh, if the mural has, or maybe it's not a mural, what if it's considered a sign, because they painted...
Sure, a sign, we, we regulate signs all day long, yeah.
Okay, so you're, the guidelines are now allowing something that currently is not allowed. That's why you're doing the guidelines? Because, right, I was saying...
Right, murals are currently not allowed, um, citywide. We do allow them in our downtown Historic District, but they're not allowed citywide.
For us to have the benefit of artwork, we need the guidelines?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm a hundred percent. I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to let murals happen, I mean, we have to have guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
I would agree with that.
And, and, you know, we have a, a relatively limited, um, uh, area where these would go, right? We're talking about commercial districts and the commercial buildings that are combined to our major arterials or our collector roads, right? I mean, you could further ratchet that back if you wanted to, and not allow them in, say, B two and B three. B three is mostly Highway seventy-two, Madison Boulevard, there's one B three parcel on County Line Road. B two is Hughes Road, it's all your neighborhood shopping centers. If you don't want to allow them on the sides of those buildings, you take those zoning districts out. You may want to only allow them in Town Madison, Downtown, and the T and D, like the Village at Oakland Springs. You know, you have a lot of flexibility if, if you're, you have concerns, you know, maybe you smart, start with a smaller geographic area, see how it goes. Um, again, the only people who have asked to do a mural is, is, you know, through the MVP, um, so it's not like people are clamoring to do this. Um, and, and we're fine with the concept, it's just, you know, need to think through things.
Are you saying we, so we can regulate it in, we can regulate it by...
Location.
Location or by zoning? For instance, uh, we could regulate where there's no murals allowed in residential areas.
Right.
Even though there, you know, there are businesses, like home businesses in residential areas, we could regulate...
We currently, it's currently written that you couldn't do a mural in a residential district. You could do it in the T and D, like Village at Oakland Springs, but only in their commercial area of the Village at Oakland Springs. Now, Town Madison is on UC, and it's written to allow it anywhere in UC. Um, and, and it's, but it's, you know, mixed use, right, horizontal mixed use, where you've got businesses next to apartments, right? And, as opposed to a business underneath an apartment. Um, so, you know, your standard subdivisions, it wouldn't be allowed, but as it's written now, it'd be allowed, let's say, on the side of the Publix, next to the subdivision, right? So, um, yeah, you could regulate location, you could frankly, I think, regulate size. You know, we don't want murals that are more than, or square feet, or whatever. We didn't do that, just because...
Make people mad.
Yeah, so, um, but you, it's, we just can't get into the content, right? That's, but, you know, all the other aspects, yeah.
Okay, I've got one question on how, um, a proposal is interpreted.
Okay.
Um, it's on the last page regarding, um, patient size, nature, and type of mural fifteen. Um, and the question that I have is regarding fifteen C, murals with a proposed projection from the wall that is located...
Yes, yeah.
So, imagine someone painting a mural of a park scene.
Mm-hmm.
And the park scene has a swing in it.
Has a bench.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Can you put a bench next to, as part of the artwork?
Yeah.
Are we regulating seating now?
No, so the reason we wrote this is because MVP saw a mural, which was like a park scene, tree, and they had painted a swing, and then, um, there was a seat, you know, a swing seat, right, that was going to project out of the wall of the mural, right? So, if somebody wanting to do that selfie could sit on the little swing and get their picture, instead of just standing up. And I think, and Mecca was the one telling you this, and I think, like, there was a regulation written that you couldn't have that projection. Am I getting that right? And so, one of the things that MVP requested was, please allow us to have a projection coming off of the wall of the mural. So, we have to think about ADA. We have to think about, uh, litigation. Um, and so, we wrote this language specifically thinking about their request, so that if somebody wanted to have something projecting out of the wall, um, we wrote it that it needs to meet ADA. You know, somebody who is, um, who meets the definition of disabled would still be able to access the mural, especially if it's on public property, and if not, that projection has to be at least eight feet high, which is the standard that we have in our sign regulation, so that if somebody is walking on a sidewalk, they won't hit their head on a sign that's projecting from the wall. So, that's what that was all about. So, if somebody wanted to put a bench in front, to answer your specific question, um, as long as that bench wasn't on a sidewalk and impeding, um, required access on the sidewalk, um, and if it was on public property, we didn't term in that if it was a movable bench, it could create a, um, a health issue, or a safety issue, or an ADA issue, then it could be allowed.
If it was, or wasn't?
If it was not creating a problem, then it could be allowed. But, yeah, if it was just the standard four-foot sidewalk, or five-foot sidewalk, they wouldn't be able to put that bench there, because then they're not, the sidewalk wouldn't meet ADA, because most benches are going to be at least eight inches or so. You have to have at least four feet clear for an ADA sidewalk. So, it really is going to depend upon the circumstances.
So, if you had a wide enough sidewalk, you could put a bench...
Yeah.
As part of the artistic skew.
You could, yeah.
-as part of the artistic skew-
You could, yeah.
-of the mural.
Mm-hmm. But that's where we got into that minutia for that.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Anybody else have any?
Okay. So for next steps, um, you're gonna send me an email from the Arts, on the Arts Alliance. You're gonna send me any additional thoughts. Do you have a recommended timeline for when we, we want to try and put this together? Or what would you like for your next steps beyond that?
Um, we certainly have a work session in July. I mean, and is that enough time for you to gather people?
Sure, as long as we get input.
An example of what it might look like, so that-
Yeah.
Get feedback. I've got a few other notes that I want to send you after this discussion. It's very helpful.
Perfect, okay. And, um, just as we close, I wanted to give a shout out to, to the planning staff. This is Kaylee Zimmerman and Matt Davidson. They've both been with us, a relatively short-term, Kaylee in particular, but they both did, um, a lot of heavy lifting on this and the research and spent a lot of time researching it. So just wanted to give a shout out to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Okay, now we have some miscellaneous items, and I think I want to first toss it over to the mayor because there was going to be an update about comprehensive plan and-
You got comprehensive plan update? Mary Beth, back up.
Ah, yeah. Um, so as you know, we started the comprehensive plan, uh, last year. We had the initial outreach back in February of twenty twenty-two, which seems like forever ago. Since then, our consultants have been meeting pretty regularly, virtually, mostly with our advisory committee. You'll recall, this is the community profile, which is the background document. It's available on our website, MadisonOnTrack2045.com. And this came out in November, and this was the, you know, basically the baseline for all of the information. And our next step after that was to work on our land use projections and then our traffic demand modeling. Uh, so we did all of our projections. We brought those through the advisory committee and got their recommendation and buy-off. We had to hold off a little bit on doing the traffic modeling because we were waiting for Hughes Road to be finished and Sullivan to be finished, because we had to do updated counts for those two roadways. We got that all finished. The traffic modeling was completed in March of this year, and our consultants are currently, um, putting together the draft chapters. We've had a draft chapter on, um, mobility, transportation, and we've sent them over comments, and then we'll be getting, um, additional drafts on land use and so forth. Um, I'm expecting, practically speaking, we'll probably be back out with public outreach meetings in August, maybe, maybe September. Um, and just as a reminder, the, the comprehensive plan is a, um, you know, kind of like a twenty-thousand-foot elevation look-down at the city, right? It's very big picture, but it will, um, have aspirational goals and will have policies about how the city can achieve its goals. And it's going to cover land use, right? How's the city going to grow? Transportation, what do you do for transportation, um, network perspective to accommodate that growth? What are your park needs? Um, you know, we've already got our inventory of parks. We've also sent our consultant all of the additional park components that we've acquired recently, but looking at parks, looking at public services, police and fire, libraries, and then it'll have implementation actions and, and, um, divide those, um, recommended projects into different tiers, like a tier one, tier two, and tier three. So that's kind of at the end game to provide a roadmap for future growth. So we're getting there, it's a little bit slower than we wanted to. Any questions about that?
In, in the, um, interest inventory thing, that, the survey that we did and people asked for things that they wanted, do you remember a science museum there being mentioned?
I would have to look back for that. I, um, I, I just have not looked back at those, but I will look and let you know.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And then rezoning.
Yes.
Does that come after we would adopt a comprehensive plan? And then would there be some recommendations in the plan?
Mm-hmm. Um, so rezoning, there's map amendments that can occur and text amendments that can occur. We had started a zoning text amendment, a zoning update or an update of our zoning ordinance, which is a text amendment. We'd started that before the comp plan, and that kind of got put on the back burner so we could do the comp plan itself. Um, but we have most of the zoning ordinance drafted to be redone and are anxious to get that going. Uh, but then there's zoning map amendments. So as a result of land use recommendations that maybe come out of the comp plan, if there are changes, um, then the city could choose to pursue those. If you're upzoning a property, meaning if you're intensifying what could be there, there's usually no problem with upzoning, but I don't think we're going to be in much of a position to upzone. If you want to downzone the property, let's say it's zone R four and you want to downzone it to R three or R two, um, those are much more difficult conversations to have because most property owners don't want to lose some of the value of their property. Um, we're not really there yet. Um, and, um, and so we'll, we'll explore that. I, I think more of the amendments will come as a text amendment and refining what we, some of our standards and what we allow and don't allow in our zoning ordinance itself.
Okay. Any other questions?
One other component is, um, related to the zoning, uh, is that we have a number of properties, um, that were annexed into the city as ag properties. Um, the city used to automatically zone residential properties ag when they got, um, zoned in. And this is like Skyline Acres, for example, a lot of that, or some of Morris Estates. And a lot of those, all of those properties don't meet our ag standard, which is the minimum of three acres for a residential lot. Um, so what we do expect to do is go through and rezone those properties to the appropriate zoning, which will probably be an R two or an R one A or something like that, which will remove a lot of the nonconformities for these properties. Um, it will be a slower process because there's an educational component so that they can understand that we're not, they're not actually losing the development, right? They're actually improving, um, their situation. But that rezoning, we do expect to tackle. It'll be a little bit of a lower priority than the zoning ordinance update itself.
There's, there's, uh, there's several, well, I know of one, two, two neighborhoods that have some of that, like Edgewater's got one of them. They've got some R, like, R three zoning. I mean, it's a single, you know, it's a single-family home there now.
Mm-hmm.
But they had zoned it for apartments, so I don't think we go back. Because I don't know if, if that house were, you know, something were to happen to that house, can that then be developed as R three?
Yes.
So that, that, I guess, is that kind of what you're talking about?
Yeah, there's some of that. Um, I, you know, I'll look at that specific one. We, we have more of an issue with these ag properties because by definition, they're nonconforming. And so then if you're going to refinance, that, that becomes more problematic if, you know, you have to tell the bank you have a nonconforming property. So it helps, um, if we can remove that nonconformity.
Hold on, I'll tell you where those are at.
Okay.
I'd like to add, um, firearm sales not being near schools or churches or any gathering of more than one person.
Yeah, so when we get into the zoning ordinance update itself, because that wouldn't be a comp plan component, but that would be a zoning ordinance implementation, um, you know, we can certainly visit that and a number of other topics, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Mayor, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Under miscellaneous? Okay, um, I had a couple of things. Uh, first of all, we have a, our next work session is scheduled for July nineteenth, and currently I've been, um, receiving, uh, proposed topics from council members, and I have received from Greg Shaw and Finance, a updated CIP list. I think you're aware of that. Um, and then, uh, Mara has, uh, requested having an update on our paving plan, greenways and trails and Pacer program, and, uh, Mayor, I think you thought that could also be updated at that meeting.
We're having a meeting with, um, engineering Friday where we're talking all the projects, and so we'll talk about how quickly we can get all that updated, so yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, and then we've, um, got mural guidelines that are, that will add to that list. And then we've had a few, um, council special, special project requests, and I thought instead of us taking them piecemeal, if, if, I don't know if your latest request can wait until the July work session, but I'd like to share with council what we have left in that budget, and let's talk as a group on different, um, ways to allocate spending on that.
Well, the need is already there. I don't know if, I mean, I'm sure that donations can be taken as they are now, but, um, but we've already had one baby dropped off in Madison, and supplies for these babies as they're being dropped off would need to be there. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels about waiting to decide if we'll need special project money for that.
We put it on Monday's agenda.
That's, I mean, if we're not, not if we're waiting until July to discuss it in work session.
Oh, no.
No.
Well-
This has to do with the baby boxes, that where you surrender the baby. We've already had one baby surrendered in Madison. There are supplies that are needed, diapers, wipes, formula, maybe a onesie, a blanket, that kind of a thing, just basic needs. Some babies might come with nothing. We don't know how these babies will come to us. I know that there have been some private donations taken up through the fire department, and I know there's funding that we still have. I don't know if we want to discuss that tomorrow, if we want to wait for them to-
If I could interject, I would just want to give a little more information on that. Uh, originally, the, there was a statute that said that you could drop off babies at hospitals, and that was recently expanded, uh, to include fire stations. Now, technically, uh, the governor signed this and it wasn't supposed to become, uh, effective for another ninety days. Well, of course, people are already dropping the babies off at our, at our station, so this is a change in the law, but as soon as people knew that this was happening, as we already know, uh, there's an immediate need for this, so.
How much did fire ask for to, to get them started?
They didn't give me a specific amount, but they're happy with whatever we're-
Chief, do you know?
Yeah, if you, if you mind coming up, Mara.
I mean, it's unfortunate that it's happening, but it's fortunate that, that it is happening.
Yeah, that baby's doing, doing very well and, uh, it's got a good future. So, uh, according to Mary Beth at the hospital, we've worked with, with them. But, uh, we, we've already put kits in place at, at the stations and bought a, a car seat for this. We, we, we don't anticipate it occurring a lot. We are considering putting a baby box in. Uh, there's some donors, uh, that, that, that are providing some of those throughout the state. I'm, I'm not sure, well, obviously, we'll, we'll decide that together whether we want to do that or not.
I thought, well, this was not part of your budget.
Well, it's not, but we've already got kits in, and, uh, Mary Beth at the hospital, they're providing some things. We have already purchased some things, so all of our fire stations right now are in pretty good shape. And my, my recommendation is that if we do start having an influx of this, that then we would come back to you and add it to our budget, but for right now, we're, we're in good shape. We've got kits in each station.
Information that I-
Yeah, I don't know where, I don't know who, who you talk to, but we're, we're good to go for now.
Just keep us posted.
Yeah, we will. And we'll, and we'll let you know.
Add that to the discussion.
We have, Mary.
And you might have a better idea by July of what other needs you might have.
Well, for right now, we're, we're in good shape. But thank you all for considering it, so. And we're, and we're happy to do this, by the way.
Thank you.
This is, you know, part of what we do.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, so we can, uh, have our council special project money discussion. Okay, and then I had one other miscellaneous topic that came up because of a, a newspaper article that came out about, uh, the science museum, uh, as if it was happening. And it sounded a little bit further along than we are as a council, and so, um, I had different council members text me, um, wanting to set the record straight in terms of where we are, and Mayor, I don't know if you want to-
Yeah, I'll gladly take that.
-step in on that.
So I think where we are is where we, where we are is we continue to get council information as the governance crew on a possibility of having a science museum in one of the facilities that the city owns. Uh, the, um, director of that, of the, of the science museum, again, as we even talked to him today, realizes that's where we are, he just won't say it in the way that council's comfortable with, which is a frustrating thing for all of us, and mayor, for that matter. Bottom line is, you guys are governance on these things like murals or medical marijuana or the community center. You know, we're just trying to gather the information to then eventually bring you something to say go or no-go. Where it starts to get timely for us is if it's going to go, we would most likely ask council for the ability to use about ten thousand square feet in building twenty-three A. We have now hired a facility manager. He starts next Monday. We're really excited about that with, so we have a list of the facilities that, um, we already need his guidance on. Um, we're going to get the list, we're going to take the tour, and then we're going to discuss options. We're going to go after low-hanging fruit for any of those things, and then we're going to bring you something in FY twenty-four for the different facilities that you would, you know, agree that we would make the changes in, of which police and fire is one of. So, long story short is Madison is simply, we're simply in the mayor's office trying to obtain the information for council to make a decision on whether council feels like it's a good idea to support that science center in, in Madison, Alabama. We're still waiting to get more information. One of the things Steve still doesn't have from Joe is the letters of, um, commitment from the funding folks, one of the things he hasn't asked for. We were hoping to get those, we don't have those yet. I know he's got a couple of meetings tomorrow where he's still trying to secure those. He did get you the plan and the budget, and so that's where we are. We're simply still trying to get you the information that in turn would allow you to make a go-no-go decision on us bringing you something formal that you would eventually vote on.
So what is the timeframe? Is it, do you want this in July? Do you want it-
I think we'd be ready by July to have a good, you know, discussion on, by that point, we'll have talk with our facilities director on, uh, facilities, yeah, director, I said manager, facilities director on what it could look like, what it's going to take, what that timeframe would be. We'd have, have an idea we need to meet with Cory to really truly understand with all the different facilities and, and land that we have right now, what is a priority for him to manage what the city needs recreationally? Um, and then you can bring all that together, and by July, along with your CIP list, we feel like we'd be ready for a good discussion on a go-no-go on that.
Going to work session in July.
Yeah.
It's looking full. The agenda is looking full.
Yeah, and, and, and just to give you an idea, we got this today on, hey, let me, let me set the record straight, let me help, because that's not my intent. This is Joe telling us this. He writes his first two sentences. "The founding museum group comprised, comprising a number of local businesses and organizational leaders, is in the planning process with the city of Madison to bring a science museum to the city." When I read that, I'm like, okay, we're in the process of discussion, but that sounds so much more along the lines of where it is than it is. We're in the early stages of having any type of discussion. We're, all we're trying to do is gain the information, he just can't quite formulate it appropriately. We still think it's a decent idea, a good idea. There's a lot of people really excited when they hear that, but we by no means feel like council has made any type of commitment that this can happen.
I mean, if he's been that difficult to deal with before we start, it's going to be like when we start.
Well, I, I think it's a double-edged sword.
Does he not realize that he is not making this easy for anybody?
Well, no, I think he fully understands that.
So-
That's the last thing he wants to do.
The point is, is that he's trying to make us angry?
What's that?
He's trying to make us angry?
He's really not.
But-
You guys are just getting really angry, and I understand because you feel like you're being put in a position that you're not in. But I, and I get that, I understand that, and he's not helping himself. One hundred percent understand that. Understand. But your job as governance is not whether it's a good guy or a bad guy. I remember you telling me this. It's not whether you like the guy or don't like the guy, or he's done a good job or he's not done a good job. We make decisions based on what's best for the city, and that's all we're trying to get to, is making, giving you that information. And if, if you then decide it's not a good idea utilizing that space, we, we a hundred percent understand and we'll move on. But that's just where we're trying to get to.
Okay, and so you're planning, um, inviting him to come and answer questions about what he's giving us?
As long as we, the answer would be yes, as long as we still feel like it's, it's a viable option, and as we look at the space in 23A, that we would even have the space to utilize there. That ties together the 23A with moving some of the police, obviously a fire station, to gain more space in City Hall, and Gerald will help us understand in City Hall what changes need to be made. One, to make it more secure, and two, to have a better work environment, more space for some of the folks that we have here. So all these components, we're really, thank you for supporting those positions, because it's really gonna help us get to some good things, it's just gonna take a little bit of time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we'll put that down for further July work session. Okay, now we are at the portion of a meeting where we need to go into executive session. Mr. Kilgore, would you like to-
Yes, I've placed in front of everyone in council, in front of mayor, a copy of a letter, and I've placed this off in front of our city clerk to place into the minutes. This is a declaration that I put together stating that after having been advised of some subject matter that the council wants to discuss, that it would be appropriate at this time, based on my legal opinion, for us to go into executive session to discuss those matters. Specifically pursuant to Alabama Code Section 36-25A, I'm sorry, 25A-7A, and I would say section six and seven of that code, I would recommend that if there's any discussion or consideration by the council as far as the acceptance, purchase, sale, exchange, lease, market value of real property, or if the council had any discussions about any preliminary negotiations involving matters of trade, where there may be some other competitor, be it private or public, both of those subject matters are appropriate for executive session, and I would recommend that executive session be called to discuss those sections.
Okay, and that is the only item that we will discuss in executive session. We will not come back into session, we will adjourn at the conclusion of executive session, there will be no votes taken. And so I need a motion and a second.
Motion to go into executive session?
Okay. And a second. Tony has the second, okay, and let's vote.
Councilmember O'Wendy?
Aye.
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 And we are now going into executive session, thank you.